I could recognize Councilmember Jack Weiss.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm joined here by Cliff Newmark and Erica Hightower from the American Red Cross. And I'm here to once again reemphasize to you yet again that today and tomorrow City Hall is hosting a blood drive and our city's first bone marrow drive as well. And if you can't, Mr. Cardenas, like, bone marrow. Folks from the Red Cross, you should know that that man there, Councilmember Tony Cardenas, over the past several months has gotten really energized about the bone marrow issue. And he knows, as all of my colleagues know, that when it comes to the issue of bone marrow, it's particularly acute. The need is particularly acute in communities of color. Tony's been very active. He's actually held and sponsored his own drive in his district as well. So colleagues, today is the blood drive. It's going on in our inaptly named fourth-floor media room. The only thing that doesn't happen in that room is stuff related to media. But what is going on today is people in the city are giving blood. I believe city workers, correct me if I'm wrong, are actually entitled to an hour of paid leave if they give blood. If that's not good enough, we've got a free pint of ice cream for you to encourage you to give blood. And so many people have been involved in this. The mayor's office in particular has done a wonderful job in working on this along with Lisa Hansen, my deputy chief of staff. I'd like to thank Carol Wheeler and George Casada from the mayor's volunteer corps. And I want to thank also the city department heads who really put a big push on to try to get folks from all the different city departments to participate today and give blood. Now, I do apologize. I don't have the latest information on which council members are able to give blood. I know that Ms. Gruel was planning on it. I'm planning on it. And hopefully some other folks here are planning on it as well. I'd like to turn it over to Cliff from the Red Cross, and he will tell you. And it'll alarm you when you hear the details from him, just how pressing the need for blood is in Los Angeles. Cliff Newmark.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Cliff Newmark. I'm the director of donor recruitment for the American Red Cross Southern California region. I'm responsible for ensuring that more than 300,000 individuals donate blood every year. Thank you very much, Councilmember Weiss, for all that you're doing for the blood and marrow program and for your personal support for the program. It's fantastic and a true example. And I'd also like to thank Mayor Han and his office for organizing the blood drive today. And finally, I'd also like to thank many members of the council here today who have given blood and also have sponsored blood drives in their districts. Our need right now is really critical, absolutely critical. If you looked in our refrigerator yesterday, you would see 47, 47 pints of O negative blood. 47 pints of O negative blood. That's it, for all of Southern California. 47 pints of O negative blood for all Southern California. O negative is a universal donor type. So if you get in an accident, they don't know what your blood type is, that's what you're going to receive. 47 pints, that's basically what one trauma victim requires. That's for all of Southern California. You look at all of our blood types, A, A, B, we're looking at about 1,100 pints in total for all of Southern California, not just the city of Los Angeles, not just the county of Los Angeles, but for all of Southern California. We are in a blood crisis today, and that's why we especially urge members of the council as well as members in the audience here today to go out and give blood today on the fourth floor of the media room in City Hall from 8:00 to 2:00 today or 8:00 to 2:00 tomorrow. We really need your blood. But we are actually always in a crisis here in Southern California. Southern California always has shortages of blood. As a matter of fact, we generally run about a two-day supply of all blood types. It's incredible. And we're very appreciative of the city of Los Angeles, who with its 45,000 employees has organized blood drives throughout the year. As a matter of fact, this blood drive today is going to probably be one of the biggest blood drives that is heard at City Hall ever. But and last year, we had about 950 donors donate for all city employees, which is good. But that's 45,000 employees that we have for the entire city. So we really urge the city to organize additional blood drives throughout the entirety of the year, quarterly blood drives. This is important for homeland security reasons, for security reasons. If there is a major crisis, if there's a terrorist attack, if there is a major disaster, and we have hundreds of trauma victims, those people will die because there isn't enough blood. Right now, we're basically providing the needs for our hospitals because we import blood from throughout the country, especially in the Midwest. That's how we're providing for our patients. But if there were a major disaster because Southern California doesn't have a good supply, we would be really struck. In addition to that general security need, we also have the needs of individuals. Every day when an individual needs to go into the hospital and require surgery, they need blood. It's a personal disaster for them. There are individuals like Bob Ferber, who's the city attorney's chief prosecutor prosecuting those who abuse animals. He's leukemia patient. He's alive today because of blood donors. When we have John Paul Quintero, a young boy, eight years old, 60 blood transfusion, he's alive today because of blood donors. We have a shortage in Southern California. We have a shortage in the city of Los Angeles. We appreciate the city's support today. We appreciate Councilmember Weiss, your support today. We urge the city to continue supporting the blood program to organize quarterly blood drives and marrow drives. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Up there on the fourth floor, easily available, easy sign-in, very convenient, everyone should go.
Thanks. We really appreciate everything you folks from the Red Cross are doing. This is truly the least we can give to you. Hopefully, we will be providing a lot more as the day goes by today and tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
If you don't mind, I have a request from the Red Cross. If you could do us a favor, at least of the council members, and maybe a couple of times a year remind us how easy it is and remind us that we can do drives at any given time and that you're there to assist us in our communities. Out of sight, out of mind sometimes, everybody's very busy, and there's a lot of wonderful things that we're trying to do with and in this city. But I think that would certainly help to keep our awareness up and to keep us going. As Jack Weiss mentioned, in my district, certainly in the Latino community, we're looking at registering people so that they can get on the bone marrow list. And I have a very sad announcement to make. We'll be a journey in memory of a former soldier, a Navy man, Jose Bonilla Molina, who passed away this morning, of which was an inspiration for many, many of the people who participated in the first drive that we had in my district.
I could recognize Councilmember Jack Weiss.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm joined here by Cliff Newmark and Erica Hightower from the American Red Cross, and I'm here to, once again, reemphasize to you yet again that today and tomorrow, City Hall is hosting a blood drive and our city's first bone marrow drive as well. And if you can't, Mr. Cardenas is like, bone marrow. Folks from the Red Cross, you should know that that man there, Councilmember Tony Cardenas, over the past several months has gotten really energized about the bone marrow issue, and he knows, as all of my colleagues know, that when it comes to the issue of bone marrow, it's particularly acute. The need is particularly acute in communities of color. Tony's been very active. He's actually held and sponsored his own drive in his district as well. So colleagues, today is the blood drive. It's going on in our inaptly-named fourth-floor media room. The only thing that doesn't happen in that room is stuff related to media. But what is going on today is people in the city are giving blood. I believe city workers, correct me if I'm wrong, are actually entitled to an hour of paid leave if they give blood. If that's not good enough, we've got a free pint of ice cream for you to encourage you to give blood. And so many people have been involved in this. The mayor's office in particular has done a wonderful job in working on this, along with Lisa Hansen, my deputy chief of staff. I'd like to thank Carol Wheeler and George Casada from the mayor's volunteer corps. And I want to thank also the city department heads, who really put a big push on to try to get folks from all the different city departments to participate today and give blood. Now, I do apologize. I don't have the latest information on which council members are able to give blood. I know that Ms. Gruel was planning on it. I'm planning on it, and hopefully some other folks here are planning on it as well. I'd like to turn it over to Cliff from the Red Cross, and he will tell you, and it'll alarm you when you hear the details from him, just how pressing the need for blood is in Los Angeles. Cliff Newmark.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Cliff Newmark. I'm the director of donor recruitment for the American Red Cross Southern California region. I'm responsible for ensuring that more than 300,000 individuals donate blood every year. Thank you very much, Councilmember Weiss, for all that you're doing for the blood and marrow program and for your personal support for the program. It's fantastic and a true example. And I'd also like to thank Mayor Han and his office for organizing the blood drive today. And finally, I'd also like to thank many members of the council here today who have given blood and also have sponsored blood drives in their districts. Our need right now is really critical, absolutely critical. If you looked in our refrigerator yesterday, you would see 47, 47 pints of O negative blood. Forty-seven pints of O negative blood. That's it, for all of Southern California. Forty-seven pints of O negative blood for all Southern California. O negative is a universal donor type. So if you get in an accident, they don't know what your blood type is, that's what you're going to receive. Forty-seven pints, that's basically what one trauma victim requires. That's for all of Southern California. You look at all of our blood types, A, A, B, we're looking at about 1,100 pints in total for all of Southern California, not just the city of Los Angeles, not just the county of Los Angeles, but for all of Southern California. We are in a blood crisis today, and that's why we especially urge members of the council, as well as members in the audience here today, to go out and give blood today on the fourth floor of the media room in City Hall from 8:00 to 2:00 today or 8:00 to 2:00 tomorrow. We really need your blood. But we are actually always in a crisis here in Southern California. Southern California always has shortages of blood. As a matter of fact, we generally run about a two-day supply of all blood types. It's incredible. And we're very appreciative of the city of Los Angeles, who with its 45,000 employees, has organized blood drives throughout the year. As a matter of fact, this blood drive today is going to probably be one of the biggest blood drives that is heard at City Hall ever. And last year, we had about 950 donors donate for all city employees, which is good. But that's 45,000 employees that we have for the entire city. So we really urge the city to organize additional blood drives throughout the entirety of the year, quarterly blood drives. This is important for homeland security reasons, for security reasons, if there is a major crisis. If there's a terrorist attack, if there is a major disaster, and we have hundreds of trauma victims, those people will die because there isn't enough blood. Right now, we're basically providing the needs for our hospitals because we import blood from throughout the country, especially in the Midwest. That's how we're providing for our patients. But if there were a major disaster, because Southern California doesn't have a good supply, we would be really struck. In addition to that general security need, we also have the needs of individuals. Every day, when an individual needs to go into the hospital and require surgery, they need blood. It's a personal disaster for them. There are individuals like Bob Ferber, who's the city attorney's chief prosecutor prosecuting those who abuse animals. He's leukemia patient. He's alive today because of blood donors. When we have John Paul Quintero, a young boy, eight years old, 60 blood transfusion. He's alive today because of blood donors. We have a shortage in Southern California. We have a shortage in the city of Los Angeles. We appreciate the city's support today. We appreciate Councilmember Weiss, your support today. We urge the city to continue supporting the blood program, to organize quarterly blood drives and marrow drives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Up there on the fourth floor, easily available, easy sign-in, very convenient. Everyone should go.
Thanks. We really appreciate everything you folks from the Red Cross are doing. This is truly the least we can give to you. Hopefully, we will be providing a lot more as the day goes by today and tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
If you don't mind, I have a request from the Red Cross. If you could do us a favor, at least of the council members, and maybe a couple of times a year, remind us how easy it is and remind us that we can do drives at any given time and that you're there to assist us in our communities. Out of sight, out of mind sometimes, everybody's very busy, and there's a lot of wonderful things that we're trying to do with and in this city. But I think that would certainly help to keep our awareness up and to keep us going. As Jack Weiss mentioned, in my district, certainly in the Latino community, we're looking at registering people so that they can get on the bone marrow list. And I have a very sad announcement to make. We'll be a journey in memory of a former soldier, a Navy man, Jose Bonilla Molina, who passed away this morning, of which was an inspiration for many, many of the people who participated in the first drive that we had in my district. And he was a leukemia patient. And, you know, he fought for our country, did wonderful things. I met the man, a very humble human being, and he passed away this morning because he wasn't able to get a donor. And that's why we need to do this, because there's a lot of wonderful people, a good, a large percentage, over 30% of the people affected by these diseases are under the age of 19. So I just wanted to pass that along as well. So please remind us. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Madam President. Tony, thank you. And what is the good thing now is we're taking the blood drive in the City Hall, because previously, we had to use the blood owner vehicle on Main Street. But because of the renovation at City Hall, and the Evans and the mayor's office, and I'm sure other council members, Jack, thank you for your leadership here, and I know your passionate speech about blood marrow and your friend who you've helped. It makes a big difference. And I like what you said, Tony, as far as keeping us reminded. You will all be proud as council members. It's not just in the City Hall, but at Parker Centers, at police stations throughout the city, at the Fire Academy, at Piper Technical Center. City employees step up all the time, and we should just help lead the way to encourage others. So I thank the American Red Cross, and thank you for letting us buy your building at 11th and Vermont, too, because that's going to help the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti Grohan Labange Ludlow Missakowski Parks Perry Reyes Smith Vivergos Weiss Zineda Padilla, 11 members present in the court. Madam President.
All right, first item?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Smith seconds. Minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves. Ms. Han seconds. Those are approved as well.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item known as just for public hearing, and the applicant requests a continuance to July 21st.
That's the councilwoman of the second district. She requested a continuance.
All right. This item will be continued, but it is a required public hearing. We do have one card submitted, Elektra Cogger. I don't know if you would like to come and speak at this time, or speak next week, the 21st, when it will be continued. Ms. Cogger?
I'll speak next week.
All right, so we will keep that card for next week. That will be the order on item one.
President, item number one, the 21st is also the Council District 14 offsite, so I don't know.
All right. Ms. Cogger, that means we are going to be meeting in the evening at 6:30 at, you can get the address from the clerk.
It's on Northeastern Avenue in Council District 14.
All right. That will be the request.
Okay. Next item, Madam President, items two through nine are items for which public hearings have been held, and I believe there's a request to continue item number two to Tuesday, July 20th.
Is there any objection to continue item Tuesday to July 20th? Ms. Ludlow?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Yes.
I was going to speak on item number eight.
Okay, we will call eight special.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I want to continue that one. I thought you were taking comment on the one before. So I'd like to continue item number eight for one week.
Okay. Item number two is being continued to 7:20, and item eight is being continued for one week. Any objections to those two items? If not, open the roll on those continuances, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That will be the order. Mr. Reyes?
Just want to call item number six special.
Item six is called special by Mr. Reyes. Ms. Perry?
Item nine.
And item nine is called special, so that we have the remaining items on the desk, three, four, five, seven. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
And the ordinance will go over for one week to July 21st.
All right.
Next item, Madam President, items 10 through 28 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, we have cards on numbers 18, 22, and 23, so those will be called special for cards. That was 18, 22, and 23. Any other specials, members? Mr. Ludlow?
I'd like to continue 24 until September 8th.
Is there any objection to continuing item 24 to September 8th? If not, that will be the order. Other specials, members, 10 through 28. Seeing none, those matters are now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, we will hold the closed sessions on the desk.
Okay, that would take council back to the items called special. However, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, let's go ahead and do public comment at this time. We have a number of public comment cards submitted. Let me ask people to come up to the podium to address us. Mr. Warren Williams, followed by Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Mr. Williams?
According to the Constitution of the State of California, Article 2, Section 1, "All political powers inherit in the people, and is inheriting the people for our protection, security, and benefit." We know that recently, the beating of Stanley Miller is now another issue. And as an advocate against child abuse, once again, especially the black community is suffering from even seeing that videotape inside our homes, which it should be aired because that's the reality, the many youth suffer. But we must challenge this council that's elected to be representing the best interest of all people in this city, but especially as well, the black community often continues to suffer racism and abuse by LAPD. We have four major demands that we require being corrected and addressed and implemented. The first one is that any review board that's been appointed by the mayor is not a review board elected by the people, and the people have a right to have their own. Therefore, any board that's non-existent, alleging to address that issue, has no authority, no right, and no power because the people have not elected it. The second thing is that Braden has made many statements that's completely wrong, calling black people tribal thugs, saying that the color of crime is black, and other such statements, and such individuals should not be allowed by this council to remain as chief of police. There's also a double standard in the system. Two beneath black individuals, especially males, even on mere allegation, get arrested and incarcerated. But yet, we can see a videotape of a police officer beating someone, and no arrest has been done. What it is established that one officer was Latino, the white officer was present, did not stop the Latino, which makes them accomplices to the crime.
Mr. Williams, can I ask you to conclude?
Yes. I have two more demands here. The second one is that, in the history of America, we have from the early 90s, the racist police commissions have been in place. And when the riots happened in St. Louis and Chicago, the federal government found that the police commissions were racist. That when they met, they never acknowledged that, never even addressed the issue. It still persists. The police commissions themselves, yes, need to be replaced. This council needs to take responsibility. And the fourth demand is, in the best interest of Stanley Miller, no one who's brutalized by the police or so victimized or mishandled by the police, to remain in the custody of the body or to anyone associated to their body. So Stanley Miller should be in a neutral place, and it should be seen by a neutral doctor, independent of those in which he's incarcerated with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, who will be followed by, we have a dozen cards here by the South Central Farmers. You can hear it next.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. I have a question that I would like to address to Councilman Lamar. What if federal homes are Bank of America accounts dealing with policies of the person named on your account, like Dr. Wanda A. Hawkins is on my account, how can they receive before I die, the money that I have left them? Councilman Lamar, if he's in the building? I would like to know, can the person receive money from your checking account, whose name is on the policy of Bank of America, or a federal home account? Can they receive the money before death?
There's not discussion during public comment.
He's not here.
All right.
Okay. I would like to also say that there's things that's going on concerning people that have faked it. Dr. Wanda A. Hawkins is dead, and she is alive. I would like to also say that they have been doing illegal things with people receiving money from people's account, who is not dead but have been held hostage, like my father, ex-president John F. Kennedy. Over hundreds of people knew that he was not dead, but in the Bell Mall Hotel, right down in Los Angeles. Now, they have received this money, but he was not dead. Again, it's under investigation. Everybody knows, and that's why everybody's freezing, because some people say, "I don't have the money. It's in another federal union money." Prime Minister Blair has the money. Bush has the money, and now it's the council.
I'm going to ask you to conclude.
Okay, I thank you very much.
All right. Next group of speakers?
I'm Salvador Navarro. Somos campesinos aquí de la 41. Can be 41?
De compañeros aquí de la 41 del jardín.
The gardens of 41?
Y aquí nos estamos, no nos vamos.
We are here, we're not leaving.
Y vamos a luchar por todo lo posible, por estar aquí en el jardín todos nosotros, juntos.
We're going to fight to be here in the garden altogether.
Y esperemos que sí sea. Gracias.
Let's hope that that's the way it happens. Thank you. Good morning.
Mi nombre es Francisca Bugarín.
My name is Francisca Bugarín.
Pertenesco al grupo de campesinos de la 41 y Alameda.
I belong to the farmers of 41 and Alameda.
Y venimos aquí a presentar ese jardín tan importante para nosotros.
And we've come here to present that garden that is so important to us.
Del cual cultivamos verduras, frutas, y es muy importante para nosotros.
Which we cultivate vegetables, fruits, and it's very important to us.
Porque allí nuestros hijos también participan en cultivar las verduras, las frutas, y trabajar la tierra.
Because our children also participate in cultivating the vegetables and fruits and the soil.
Por eso queremos que por favor nos apoyen lo más que puedan en que se mantenga ese jardín allí, tanto por nuestros hijos, nuestras personas mayores, y por el medio ambiente.
That's why we want you to support us in keeping that garden there for our children, for the elder, and for the environment.
Que yo en lo personal, yo soy una de las personas que me gusta pelear por la tierra, por la naturaleza, que lucharé hasta el final, hasta donde se pueda, por ese jardín. Y por eso pido su ayuda de ustedes para que nos apoyen a todo el grupo de campesinos que venimos a representar ese local, y que al contrario de quitarlo, pongan más, por favor, o nos ayuden.
I'm personally, we'll fight until the end to keep that land, and we will come here for you to help us in keeping that land for us.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Simons Amora.
Good morning. My name is Amor Simora.
Pertenesco ahí al grupo del jardín. Me gusta cultivar la tierra, y queremos que no nos quite el jardín.
I belong to the group, the farmers, and we don't want that land to be taken away.
Porque de ahí nuestros hijos, o sea, los estamos enseñando también a cultivar la tierra.
We're teaching our children how to cultivate the land.
Y nos ha gustado estar siempre ahí. Por eso les pedimos que por favor no nos quite el jardín.
We've liked being there, so we're asking not to take that garden away.
Y ahí vamos a estar, y no nos vamos a ir. Gracias.
We're going to be there, and we're not going to leave. Thank you.
For the record, one more time, Los Angeles Land Use Coalition is in support of the South Central Farmers. Aquí estamos, y no nos vamos. Tierra de libertad. Thank you.
That concludes public comment at this time. I think we can go back now to the items that were called special.
Item number six was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item number six.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to just rise and thank my colleagues on this issue. Councilman Garcetti, Councilman John Perry, and Councilman Vivergos. As you know, we've been moving to put together all the pieces that sets the foundation for how we are able to clean up the industrial lands that sit in the undisturbed areas, the overpopulated areas. And as indicated in your report, most of these brownfield conditions are disproportionately located in areas in which there's very little land for open space. There's very little land for the type of treatments for our water supply. We can have stormwater harvesting technology that helps us promote a healthier future for the city. So I speak to this because this is one key piece of the puzzle. This is one way in which we provide resources to the businesses, the property owners, the companies that are affiliated as owners, as tenants, that are in a position to make a difference but cannot because of the financial burden of cleaning up these industrial lands. So these brownfield conditions are very real. They need to be addressed. As we continue through our understandings of the watersheds and the subwatersheds, and how we continue to talk about how we make the TMDLs and meet our goals, cleaning the lands around the river, in industrial corridors, because as you look at the general plan, most industrial lands, the majority of it is along the riverways. And this is where we need to clean up the contaminated earth. So these brownfield conditions are very costly, and this kind of support will take us a long way. And I'm sharing these thoughts with you so that we can start looking at this bigger puzzle. It's all this many pieces, and this is a significant one. Ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we have the committee report before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number nine was called special by Councilmember Perry, and there are two reports on the file. A motion is required. Ms. Perry?
I think that all we needed to do on that item was to move the personnel committee report also. Make a motion for that. I think that's what Mr. Zine was concerned about. We're on the item.
I'm sorry.
Moving the personnel report.
Yes.
That's all you wanted?
Let's just move the personnel report, yes.
Okay.
All right. Then we have consensus there between the two chairmen of the committee. Personnel committee report has been moved and is before us. No one else wishes to speak on this matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter is approved. Let me recognize Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to make an introduction to all of you. We've got some students here from UCLA. If I could ask you guys to please stand for a second so you could be recognized. We have 80 students from UCLA, from the School of Social Welfare. They're here with their professor, Dr. Georgia Leap. For those of you who are familiar with the LAPD, you may recognize that last name, Dr. Leap. And these students are here as part of their course of studying how to be active in the community, how to work in the community. They're all going to be working at different levels, different positions throughout the LA area this summer, volunteering their time. It's a real delight and honor to have you here today. Welcome to City Hall. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, and welcome to the students. Next item?
Item number 18, called special for card from the public.
All right, we have had cards submitted, so we will have public comment on item 18. Let me recognize Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins, item 18. You don't wish to speak on it? All right. Then we will, item 18 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item.
Items 22 and 23 were also called special for cards from the public. And I don't know if you wish to take those up together. They're both communications from Public Works.
Ah, no, but they deal with different items. So let's deal with item 22 first. We have a card for Ms. Elektra Wenger. Ms. Wenger, did you want to speak on this? Kruger, I'm sorry, Elektra Kruger.
Yes, my name is Elektra Kruger. I reside in the community of Shadow Hills, which is a community that is bordering the Tohanga Wash. The tax-defalted property to which this item refers, it borders the Los Angeles County's big Tohanga Wash mitigation project, and it is locally referred to as the Tamaio property. The piece of property in the Wash is really contiguous to no other city property, so it isn't really of much value to the city. And it does serve as a frequent homeless encampment with its trash piles, with its campfires. And that is a very great danger to a lot of the dry brush that's down in that Wash area, especially this time of year. The county employees do regularly inspect their mitigation bank area for trash, for the encampments, and deal with encampments, with any number of mitigation requirements that they must deal with, with their mitigation project there. And so they certainly do have the resources to monitor the encampments in that project area. So I therefore very strongly urge the council to introduce a motion that would affect the sale of this Tamaio project to the Los Angeles County Flood Control District, such that they may turn that over to the Tohanga Wash mitigation project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for that information. Let me recognize at this time Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Ms. Misekowsky, and thank you, Elektra, for being here this morning. This is an issue that we've been working very closely with the community to ensure this transfer. Two big bureaucracies are trying to work it out, but we have been working closely and also to address some of the issues of the homeless encampments that have been there and caused some problems in that particular area. But I want to thank you, Elektra, for being here tonight after, I think we were together till almost 10 o'clock last night at the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. So I just wanted to acknowledge her for being here and supporting. Thank you.
All right. We have the recommendation before us on the acquisition of the property. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is approved. I believe that takes us to item 23. And we also have two cards that were submitted on this. Again, Ms. Elektra Kruger on item 23. Ms. Kruger? Ms. Kruger, we're on item 23. You also submitted a card to speak on that, as well as Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Well, hello again, and my name is still Mrs. Kruger. And I still reside in the community of Shadow Hills, which still borders the Tohanga Wash. And again, as I said, that Wash is a great draw for the homeless encampments. And one of the things that does come with them is a lot of these shopping carts, which tend to be abandoned along the streets of Shadow Hills. Retrieval of these carts is rarely prompt. It requires repeat calls to get this done. And I know these carts are not particularly cheap to the businesses. And so I strongly suspect that the costs of these carts, when they disappear, get passed on to their clientele. So if these businesses were required to provide proof of a certified contract with a cart retrieval company as part of getting their annual business licenses, and if some pretty hefty fines were put on any violations, if those carts were not retrieved within a suitable time period, be it 24 hours, be it 48 hours, I think these carts would be far more apt to get picked up and retrieved within a reasonable amount of time, and far less likely to end up in our streets for a long period of time. And may even reduce the chance of these carts leaving the premises, because the businesses themselves may work a little more concertedly to come up with ways that unauthorized removal of these carts would even happen. So I do strongly urge the council to introduce a motion that would request of the city attorney a preparation of a city ordinance that would include some kind of policy like this. In addition, a stronger enforcement of the existing Los Angeles Municipal Code, which is item section 41.45, that does state that the unauthorized removal, use, or possession of shopping carts is a misdemeanor, might help if that was far more strongly enforced. Thank you.
Ms. Hawkins?
Good evening again. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. On item number 23, I would say no on this proposal of abandoning shopping carts. Also sales on the streets, which is ice cream trucks, clothes, food from vendors. People are being poisoned by people that are in mafia.
Ms. Hawkins, I am going to ask you to keep on the subject, which is the shopping cart matter.
Okay. Organized crime groups to kill the people. Again, we have to be very aware of people that are not playing with the United States of America, but it's hate.
I ask you, that testimony is concluded. And at this time, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. We introduced this motion at the request of people in the neighborhoods who keep complaining like the lady from Shadow Hills did about the number of shopping carts in the neighborhoods. And I know Mr. Cardenas and I went and met with the industry last year, and they're more than anxious to participate with us. This ordinance will allow us to do a number of things. First of all, establish that a process by which the industry must place their name and phone number on all shopping carts, that they will present to the city each year a certification that they have, a bona fide company to go out and pick them up, and that there will be a severe fine if they don't go out and do that. I know one morning after I went to a neighborhood council meeting, that people complained about the shopping carts in the street, and I counted 12 of them on my way to my office, which is a mile and a half from my home. If anyone drives around any of the streets of Los Angeles and suburbs, you will see them all over the place. This will require them to be picked up within 24 hours, get them off the streets, and if they don't, severe penalties will accrue to the companies that don't pick them up. And also ask the Bureau of Street Services to establish any cost to the city in enforcing this, and pass that on to the shopping mart industry. So I think what we've proposed here is a proposal that will, one, clean up our neighborhoods, help make quality of life better in our neighborhoods, and, two, pass on the cost to the industry for that process without any cost to the taxpayer. So the committee and I both urge the council's approval, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, this matter and the committee report recommendation is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is approved.
Madam President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, let's clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Friday, September 24th, for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Zine is excused on that date?
And that clears the desk for closed session.
All right. I am going to ask to have to clear the audience. We have to go into executive session to discuss matters on litigation with our attorneys. So would the sergeants please assist us in clearing the room at this time?
We're now in open session.
Our next item before council, Mr. President, is item number 29, and that's a settlement in Cohan and Arco versus City of Los Angeles. And the action would be for council to rescind the August 8, 2002 action and refer the matter to the Planning Land Use Management Committee for public hearing on the appeal.
We have a comment by... Or Councilman Reyes has the floor. We're on item number 29, in open session.
I believe I'm number 30?
Okay, you want to comment on item 30. So we'll hold your comment, and we are now on item 29. See no more speakers. Open the roll. Close the roll. Announce the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Fifteen ayes. That measure passes.
And I... Item number 30 is before council, and the city attorney will speak to that.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. The terms of the settlement are as follows. Palmer will dismiss all the pending litigation with prejudice, pay $200,000 to the city, provide 100 spaces to LAUSD for use by the Evans Learning Center, and 60 spaces of interim off-site parking during construction, provide an open plaza area with a fountain, include a gateway concept in the bridge from Orsini 1 to Orsini 2A, agrees not to remove any affordable housing units in the development of Orsini 2 or Orsini 3, agrees to work with the city in the design of the streetscape for Orsini 2 and 3, will implement and pay for a uniform streetscape along Cesar Chavez Avenue for Orsini 2 and 3, and defend and indemnify the city and the CRA. In exchange, the city would remove the application of the scorched earth ordinance and adhere to city deadlines in the permit process.
Okay. With that, we have Councilman Reyes. He has the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just rise to, one, thank the city attorney's office for the hard work in putting this together, Sharon Lo from my office, who was our lead representative in this case. More importantly, colleagues, the statement I wanted to make is that this is an example of how we can work together, both the business community, development community, along with the stakeholders, the people who live in that pocket, folks who have treasured and fought hard to preserve our historic structures. And this provides an environment in which we can come together and try to get the best for everyone, achieving that balance, especially in a very critical juncture as the regional traffic flows in the downtown. We'll have improvements for the street corridor, the landscaping, a fountain that will celebrate the historic element of this area, as well as the $200,000 that can work as seed funds for those folks who are engaged in preservation of limited income, but who want to preserve their windows, their porches, all the architectural elements of the grand old structures, which is a very costly process for many who have limited means. This area is a mixed-income environment, and maintaining the affordable units is crucial. Workforce housing is critical. We all know the city is feeling a major crunch that is putting pressure on folks who have the least income. So this particular agreement addresses many elements, and I hope we can move together. And I thank you for your support. Again, thank the city attorney for the great work. Thank you very much.
Okay. Seeing no more speakers, open the roll. Close the roll. Tally the vote. Announce the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That measure passes. 29 and 30 will go forthwith.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Seeing no more public comment.
This would be the time for announcements from council members, if there are any.
Councilmembers, announcements?
Yes, two things tonight. Our Board of Recreation and Parks Commission will meet at Campo de Coinga, on Coinga in on Lake Ship, right across from Universal. It's a open public meeting at 5:30 tonight. Our Recreation and Parks Commission, if anyone in the public is interested in attending, they're welcome to attend at 5:30, Campo de Coinga on Lake Ship, just across from Universal. You can take the red line there. Additionally, tonight at 6:30, I have a community congress, and then it's open to the public. It's at Travel Town in the main pavilion hall. We have a guest speaker, John Miller, from the Los Angeles Police Department, to talk about hometown and homeland security. So that's tonight at 6:30 in the Griffith Park Travel Town complex. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Smith? Oh. Announcements? Okay. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple announcements. One, tomorrow night, Sunset and Vine, one of the biggest residential projects to hit Hollywood in many years, will have its official reopening. But part of that will be the reopening of Schwab's, a Hollywood institution that used to be a little bit further west. It's going to be reopening. It's going to include C.C. Brown's, and we invite folks to come out and to see the grand opening tomorrow night, about 7:30, at Sunset and Vine. Also, I was over the board of supervisors yesterday, but I was informed Mr. Reyes didn't tell everybody the results of the Lotus Festival Dragon Boat Races. Just wanted to let everybody know that the bet between Mr. Reyes's office and myself of cleaning up the parks, that we look forward to CD1 coming into a nice park in CD13 and cleaning up for a half hour. We would have been happy to do the same thing if we had lost.
Whose office lost the race, then?
Well, I didn't want to have to spell that out, Mr. President, but we tied... Surprisingly, in the elected official category, the mayor's office actually came, stepped up, and in all fairness, tied for first place out there on the water. But... So our bet with the mayor's office, we're going to have to settle in about two weeks with another row out there on the water. But Mr. Reyes's team rode very strong. We are lucky again to have a three-peat.
So Mr. Reyes's team lost. Okay. Ms. Gruel?
I was going to say, and next year, I was there and watched the big race. It was... It was close until the turn, but it was a good race, and I've challenged now my staff to come out and compete next year. So, you know, it's a lot of fun when you haven't been, but the two good sports and had great, great teams. They were very serious, though. This was not a joking matter. It was a beautiful festival.
So it was close, a lot of good sportsmanship, but Mr. Reyes's team lost. Mr. Reyes?
Exactly. Yes.
Thank you for that clarity. We hope to see you out there. But to me, it was a lot of fun. We got to get together with our staff. But it just goes to show that I'm going to have to try to look for staff that has five years of crew under their belt and build up that technical expertise in getting around that turn. So it was a good showing, and we had a lot of fun, and we're more than happy to fulfill our commitment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. You obviously showed that you lost very graciously and gracefully. Any more announcements? Okay, we... Will everybody please stand? We will now move to adjourning motions. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Colleagues, I would like us to adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Julian Hernandez, who passed away this past Monday at the age of 95. Julian moved to San Pedro when he was 19 years old. He worked as a contractor. He built many homes and apartments in San Pedro until his retirement in 1980. Julian was an active member of the Lions Club for 52 years, where he served as president, where he was given the Melvin Jones Fellowship Award, and where he was named Citizen of the Year in 2000. He was also on the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors. Julian is survived by his wife, Lupe, his son, Julian Jr., his daughters, Lupe and Cecile, his grandchildren, Rick and Alicia, and his great-grandson, Anthony. He will be certainly missed, but he's lived such a great life that has forever changed the landscape physically and other ways in the San Pedro area. Funeral mass will be offered Thursday, 10:30 a.m. at Mary Star of the Sea Church, and the family has asked that, instead of flowers, people make donations to the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labange, who just brought this to my attention, of a constituent of mine that passed away. She was the oldest Californian, Elma Corning, 112 years old, who died Monday night at Kingsley Manor Care Center in the 13th District of Natural Causes. And she was born February 22, 1892, on a farm in...
And she was born February twenty-second, eighteen ninety-two, on a farm in Ocalusa, Iowa. And this was somebody who, excuse me, graduated from Ocalusa High School in nineteen-ten, to give you an idea of how old she was. She had an only child on May tenth, nineteen twenty-four. She, as a young woman, taught junior high school, was a real good cook, and made all her own clothes, said her son, and she loved to make dresses. She married Dwayne Corning, World War I Army pilot. He died in nineteen fifty-six. She was very active into her nineties, and one, once a year until she was one hundred and two, she flew to San Francisco to visit him and his wife. Even in her hundreds, she maintained her interest in current events, music, and the Los Angeles Dodgers. There will be a memorial service planned at the First Congressional Church in Los Angeles. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Next, we have Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Hattie Mae Davis, who was a member of the Power of Love Christian Fellowship Church under the direction of Bishop Turner as the pastor. Ms. Davis was born in nineteen forty-two, passed away July eighth, two oh four. Funeral service will be held at ten a.m. on Friday, July sixteenth, at the Covenant Word Center.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
I ask the council to adjourn in the name of Barry Allen Kritzberg of Winnetka. Barry succumbed over a decade of diabetes battle at the young age of fifty-four. He is survived by his wife, Karen Kritzberg, who is a reserve police officer, Los Angeles Police Department, Devonshire Division, and I know all the people in the Devonshire family feel for Karen today, and we deserve, ask to adjourn in the name of Barry Allen Kritzberg. I believe that Mr. Zion would probably want to be a second on that as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll add Mr. Zion to that. Any other adjournments in memory?
I have one. Members, as I mentioned earlier, Sergeant Jose Molina Bonilla passed away this morning. He succumbed to leukemia. He was a United States Navy soldier for four years, and shortly after coming back from the war in Iraq, he was diagnosed with leukemia about a year ago, and he passed away this morning. He leaves behind his father, Emelto Molina, his mother, Vilma Molina Bonilla, and three sisters, Lisette, Delvis, and Alba, and also his grandmother and two nephews, Roberto and Jason, and one niece, Jada. I had the pleasure of meeting Jose in the hospital here at Wadsworth, as he was there for the last few months, and they sent him home to Bakersfield for the last two and a half weeks of his life. And he was a very inspirational young man, a very kind-hearted human being, and he, to the last minute, was hopeful and not complaining about his situation, but was so grateful for the fact that people came to a drive that we had in Sun Valley on behalf of him and many victims, and some people drove all the way down from San Diego and were there at seven in the morning waiting for us to open, so they could donate blood, hopefully, to save Jose Bonilla's life. But many lives will be saved from his inspiration and his givingness to the community, and we adjourn in his memory. With that, this council is now adjourned.
City View, Channel Thirty-five, your city, your channel.